Let's go ahead and start the agenda. Some of you may know that, of course, our meetings started at 2:00 PM. So we've been meeting with each other since 2:00 PM. So we might be a tad bit punchy already as the day goes on. Do want to thank Chairman of Richland Two School Board, Craig Plank, for being with us today. So glad to have you here and thank you for the great work you guys are doing to educate our babies. Our babies. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Good evening. Mr. Rickaman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Ms. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask a little Miss Trinity Heath to come on up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you haven't met Trinity, she's one of the sweetest little girls you're ever going to meet. All right. We want you to get right here to the microphone there.
I pledge allegiance to the Mayoral of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trinity.
Thank you, dear. Reverend McDowell, you mind leading us in a word of thanks?
I shall. Let us bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this day and for all of the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Even in the event of inclement weather, we pray that Thou would touch each one of us so that we might gather in this place, understand what it is we've got to do, and we do it with expediency. Touch us. Allow our city to continue to grow, touching the lives of our citizenry. We ask it in your name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend McDowell. Madam City Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we would ask council to adopt the agenda. I do believe we'll be holding Item 16. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
We would ask for any public input related to the agenda items as outlined. Seeing none, we ask council to approve the November 21st, 2017, and December 5th, 2017 meeting minutes.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin, we would ask council to approve consent agenda items nine through 15.
So move.
Second.
Is there a motion? I mean, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move the previous question. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Rickaman.
Hi.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. And Madam City Manager, we're also holding Item 16.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Moving into a period of presentations, Mayor Benjamin, and taking an opportunity, a moment of personal privilege, if you don't mind, and one that I think you all would certainly join me, I would ask Ms. Libby Gober, Assistant to City Council, to come forward for a special presentation, as she is about to retire, and we want to celebrate Libby on her last council meeting with us.
Libby.
I know you all have been celebrating her today, and we'll celebrate her some more, and it's her birthday. So I was having to do this a little too often these days. You know, one of our last council meetings, we honored David Noe, who'd been with the city for 30 years or more, and Libby, you've been with us for 19 years. All of this institutional knowledge, but I know they have shared it with their colleagues, and we're in good hands, but we're certainly going to miss her, and I know you all will as well. So with that, Libby, we want to celebrate you, and share some cake, and give you some flowers, and see your flowers while you're with us. Libby, I don't know if you have anything to say. You're not usually going to lose words, but if you would like to say anything, please.
No, I'm usually not, Melron. It has been my pleasure to serve as Executive Assistant to City Council all these years. And I know that some of you have already said that you will be in touch, and I feel sure you will be. And I say that cheerfully. I want you to be. I want you to be. So as I go forward, now I'm going to ask you all just to pray for Jack, now that I'm retiring, because I didn't have me for Tom. So that's kind of scary. That's kind of scary, but thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
Well, Libby, it goes without saying that very few decisions, at least over the last decade or more, that have helped build the arts and cultural infrastructure of the city. I mean, you've been really at the center of all those decisions, helping shape Columbia, and I think you can go around the city and put your hands on so many things that you've helped lead and create, and we're thankful for your leadership. We're going to miss you.
It has been my pleasure to do so, to serve all of you and your constituents, all the nonprofits, and everybody that we have served throughout the years.
God bless you. Jack, we're going to pray for you, brother, okay?
I was going to say, I know you guys care a lot about her, but I care a lot more about her.
with you, or if you want to share it. Whatever you decide.
We need to share it.
Okay. Well, we'll let y'all handle that. Thank you, Libby, for everything.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Item 17, recognition of the 2017 Employee of the Year. I would ask Mr. William Skip Holbrook, our Police Chief, to come forward to present Ms. Felicia Prince Heath, Accreditation Manager for the Police Department. And I'm going to let Chief do this, but I will tell you that Felicia really is Janie on the spot, I guess is my best way of saying it, when it comes to seeing through a process that was very intense for this department this year and leading up to this year. So I am so happy to see her be recognized, Chief.
Well, it's hard, really, to capture in words how impactful the work that Felicia has done over these last three years to cause us to realize this accreditation. You know, we went all the way with advanced accreditation. It was absolutely a three-year process, and there is a number of staff that are here that really took direction for her from, for the, over quite a long period of time. And what's been so special about Felicia to me is she absolutely was a subject matter expert when it came to accreditation, but she is not someone that you had to constantly push. She put the ball and ran with it, and we are accredited today because of the work she did. But while she was doing this for the Police Department, she has also managed the 911 Center and assisted in with maintaining accreditation, which is just a huge undertaking, and has assisted Parks and Recreation in their endeavors to become accredited as well. So she is a shared asset and one that is valued tremendously. And Felicia, I can't say thank you enough. This is the most important thing that's happened to our Police Department, certainly in my tenure, and I would suggest it's the most important thing that's ever happened to us. So thank you.
So this is just a small token. A lot of times when I give it to our male employees, I tell them to share it with someone special in their life, but I'm giving it to you.
She says that when it's a man, share it with someone. If she gets to a woman, there's no sharing there. But they're right.
Thanks.
Yeah, feel it.
Big, big.
It was one of the, I think, most important things that the Chief and the City Manager and the Council wanted to achieve for the city. So this is a big win as we continue to build just an incredible police force of men and women who are dedicated to keeping this community safe. It's a big deal, and it's wonderful to be able to recognize Felicia and her leadership of 2017. So thank you. Thank you, Skip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have another special recognition that Chief Holbrook will present. I would ask Mr. Melron Kelly, Deputy Police Chief, to come forward, and this is another example, Mayor Benjamin and council, of Chief Holbrook's attention to professional development. He puts a lot of emphasis on that with our officers, even our most senior staff. So I'm very proud of Deputy Chief Kelly as well.
Melron. Melron. Mayor Pro Tem, are you going to say first?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you. On December 15th of 2017, Deputy Chief Kelly graduated from the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Chief Kelly was a member of the 270th session of the academy. It was comprised of 221 law enforcement officers from all over the world, 48 states, 12 service branches of the service, and 21 different countries. Quite a diverse group of law enforcement executives. The academic curriculum at the academy was first accredited in 1971 through the University of Virginia, and this partnership with the University of Virginia is, really is what has made it most meaningful and impactful with law enforcement executives over the years. Law enforcement personnel who successfully complete the comprehensive 11-week program have an opportunity to earn both undergraduate and graduate degrees. And I'm very proud to report that Chief Kelly earned 17 graduate degrees while he was there.
Seventeen?
Seventeen. Credit.
Okay, I know credit.
Seventeen credits.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He's smart, but not that smart. And I'll speak to a couple other of our staff that are here that have undertaken this as well, but that's a pretty heavy lift. Not only is he away from family, a lot of pressure on your way there, but it is heavy academics, and he did a lot of writing, a lot of soul searching, too. In addition to his academic accomplishments, he participated in a series of fitness challenges throughout his 11-week advanced training. Each of the challenges was intended to prepare him to ultimately complete this task, which is called the Yellow Brick Road Challenge, and he did that. He also completed a course, he completed a course and received the Yellow Brick Award, but he also accomplished two other significant distinctions. And this was somewhat subject, suspect to me, we did verify this, but he also swam 20 miles and received a blue brick and white.
You lost me there. You lost me there.
Chief, where was that swim done? Where was that done?
Chris, what do you think about that? You believe that one, Chris?
He also swiped 270 miles, and he got a black brick. And again, it is highly suspect, but we did verify this.
I love to see the video.
He's also eating healthy now, and it's, you're looking at the new Chief Kelly. But I will finish by saying organizational success in maintaining the culture of excellence is achieved through developing leaders in an organization. Deputy Chief Kelly is an example of that. Here tonight also is Major Dana Orey, Captain Chris White, they both have also completed this.
Awesome.
And again, it's all about developing staff and executive staff.
I've seen Chris in the pool, so I believe that we said about Chris. Dana, I'm sure you too, by the way.
I think Orey sinks. But in recognition of this, we've presented him the Distinguished Service Award, and again, we're very, very proud of him, and we're proud of all our staff, and the emphasis that they place individually on themselves to professionally develop. But thank you all for at the moment to recognize him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I think we're going to get a picture with you, too, but the Pro Tem had an order to say. You know she won't let you leave the podium without saying something.
No, I just want to say, and I know I've said this before, probably not in the last few years, but for those of us who've been around kind of a long time, you know, Melron started off as an explorer with the Columbia Police Department, and then he lived in the residential Coban over there on Lady Street. I remember going to community meetings over there, and he lived over there. But he's worked his way up, and I think that is just a certain testament to his commitment to the city, because he could have gone anywhere, but his commitment to the city, but certainly to see this commitment to higher personal and professional development is extraordinary. We are so proud of you. We know it's been a lot. I know your wife, so I know it's been a lot on your family as well. But we appreciate your dedication and your commitment. And then I just have to say to Skip, I mean, you know, looking at the command staff, you know, there were years, not too long ago, we can remember where, you know, people did not feel like, you know, they could excel or move up in the ranks, and Skip's commitment to investing into these officers, into the command staff, into everybody, is, shows that not only is this a department, but it's a family, and so you all should be commended, but we are all very proud of each and every one of you.
Thank you very much.
We'll get a picture. We'll get a picture. I love you. We'll get a picture.
I love you. 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 and the eradication of human trafficking in the community and of its victimized citizens, and whereas it is appropriate to help and honor those individuals and families who are fighting for the return and restoration of their loved ones, and whereas the United States Department of State estimates 600,000 to 800,000 people are trafficked in the United States each year, 80% are female and children, and whereas hundreds of organizations, coalitions, campaigns have been formed to continually acknowledge this pressing issue and work towards a solution in human trafficking in the United States, which will strengthen the communities and the nation as a whole. And whereas according to the South Carolina Human Trafficking Task Force report, out of the 50 human trafficking charges statewide, more than half of them in 2016, half the charges were made in the Midlands. Whereas all races, ethnicities, male and female, foster care youth, LGBTQ, AI, community, et cetera, all targeted by this crime and are in need of support and assistance for the free and commercial sexual exploitation, debt bondage, and voluntary servitude, forced labor, forced marriages, and all forms of slavery. Now therefore, I, Stephen K. Benjamin, Mayor of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, along with our fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2018 to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the great city of Columbia, and urge my fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. I apologize. It's difficult working your way through this. This is painful. This is painful. And it's very easy to go on with our very busy lives that we all lead and not realize that so many people are suffering in 2018 with these conditions, and we all have to more than redouble our efforts to try and deal with this issue. Was someone here to speak to the matter? If not, I would love to present this proclamation to some of the students here and also representatives from the Commission.
Jim, Jim Manning is here.
Jim, are you here to speak on the issue? I wanted to hear from this young lady as well, because these young ladies reached out on social media, as everyone does nowadays. No one actually calls or sends an email anymore, and I hope our response was prompt enough. Absolutely. We will stand with you and beside you and in front of you and behind you as you work on this issue, and want to know what more we can do as we go forward. Please introduce yourself as well.
My name is Kenesha Green. I'm with the Commission for Minority Affairs. Oh, sorry. My name is Kenesha Green. I'm with the Commission for Minority Affairs. I'm the Human Trafficking and Immigration Initiative Coordinator for the state.
And my name is Alexis Williams Scurry, and I'm the Richland County Anti-Human Trafficking Project Coordinator. I just want to thank you all for allowing us to present this proclamation and to make sure that we're raising awareness and helping others learn that they need to educate themselves as well. So we want to thank you again for this proclamation and for your time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Jim Manning. I have the honor and privilege of chairing the Richland County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force for a little over two years now. Also want to recognize we've got folks here from the Richland County CASA, the court-appointed special advocates who are the volunteer guardian at Lydum's in our county, who most see it, and you may or may not know, but for about the past two years, about once every six weeks, there is an arrest made with a student in a Richland County school being trafficked in our community. And we have bikers against child abuse are here, and so that's some of the people you'll see that'll come up to get the picture made with you, Mr. Mayor.
We thank you all for your leadership and the work that you're doing.
And let me also say that Chairman Plank from the School Board, he's attended several of the Richland County Anti-Human Trafficking meetings, as has Commissioner Black from Richland One.
Fantastic. Whatever else we can do, obviously, I know it's high on the agenda of our police department, but I do know that obviously we have our utility bill inserts that go out pretty regularly. It'd be wonderful just to kind of keep in front of people some of the signs that all of us should be looking out for in those we send out, as all of you get your utility bills, so you know how frequently those go out. I'd love for us to do that, Madam City Manager, and we at least know a couple of really awesome billboard owners in the community as well, and let's see if we can reach out to some of them, all of them. But starting, of course, with Grace, Hal has always been a great community partner, and Lamar, to see if we can get some dedicated space to, again, training eyes and attention on this issue. All right.
We will definitely be in contact for all of that that you just provided, and we want to thank you again for the information and also the proclamation and your willingness to assist us to end and eradicate human trafficking in the city of Columbia and in Richland County.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. These two young ladies are showing leadership, and Councilman Manning is always young at heart, but it's also awesome to have incredibly young leadership here working on this issue. We do have the representatives from the Scholars Academy. I was wondering who these very well-dressed young people were. Come on, all of you, come on up. Come on up, and I want you all to speak to this issue as well. It's exciting to have you involved in leading on this. Introduce yourselves as well.
Yes, sir. My name is Riley Arford.
I'm Michaela Brown.
My name is Rhiana Thompson.
And like you said, we're from the Ridge U Scholars Academy for Business and Law. We have been pursuing the advocacy work against sex trafficking for about two years. We are juniors now. We started our sophomore year. We have just been wrecked by the current devastation and desperation that the state of Columbia and the state of South Carolina is in to eradicate sex trafficking, and we feel very strongly about the... We're very passionate about eradicating it in South Carolina. We feel that the numbers are just way too high. One of our main goals is to stop the criminalization of sex trafficking victims. So a lot of times you'll see, like, victims are criminalized as prostitutes instead of, like, victims as they are, because they'll show all the signs of a prostitute, but it's never looked at deeper as victims. And so that's one of our main goals, is to help victims get prostitution expunged off their records or otherwise. And another one of our main goals is, I know one of the young ladies asked, they said, to educate ourselves. We want that put into the curriculum at the state level and county levels, that it put into the curriculum sex trafficking. I know we have a little bit in our curriculum now, seventh grade, eighth grade, where we teach it in the health curriculum, but it's nothing on a broad scale. We don't have anything to really teach kids about sex trafficking and the signs and dangers of it. If you guys follow us on Twitter, we were actually handing out pamphlets and educating people within our own school about sex trafficking and sex trafficking awareness, because like y'all said, it is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and we are on fire for it, and we are very passionate about it. And we just thank you guys so much for hearing us out and pushing this pressing issue forward. And we just thank you so much.
Absolutely. Ladies, we have a word as well? You have no idea how we swell with pride to see you all here. I see the chairman back there. His chest is all puffed up right now. I see the type of leadership that you all are displaying, and it means a great deal, and leaves us very hopeful for the future of this community. You mentioned Twitter. What's your Twitter handle?
Yes, sir. So we are @stopsexslavery. You can also email us at that. And we are very much so thankful for you, councilmen, and for you, Mayor. And it's beyond, beyond thankful to be here and be in this situation and seeing what we're passionate for. Y'all are passionate for as well.
We're proud of your work. We want to continue to support you. We will start following you on Twitter tonight. And Ms. Harper, Lauren, wave your hand. We're going to make sure by tomorrow you all have hard copies of the resolution as well. It shows the fruits of your labors here. And whatever else you need us to help you do in the near and distant future, you got to keep us plugged in, all right? We're following you, okay?
Yes, sir.
In more ways than one, all right?
Yes, sir.
God bless you all. Follow you.
Hard to follow. A former teacher and me swell with pride is so accurate, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Did you, Mr. Deputy Chief Kelly was back in the room, I believe. Did you need him?
I know Mr. Davis had a word to say while you're in the room, Melron. You know, it's tough to get a compliment out of him when you're not in this room, so please, have a word. Have a word.
You got away. I think Tamika sort of summed it up, but I think folks would tell you that I really support CPD, and I think one of the things that has made our department the best, I know in the state and if not all of the southeast, is the investment that you guys put in one another, not just what we do physically and that sort of thing, but the fact that your record to this point, and you're going to go further. And the stint in Washington is indicative of what it takes to have a A1 organization. National accreditation is another, and that's all about the leadership, even amongst the guys. And I appreciate that, and I've never been bashful about defending that throughout the city. And there's an appreciation for that, because, you know, when I speak about CPD, I know I do it with pride, and I can back up every word I say because of what you guys do. And our numbers speak for themselves also, and certain levels of crimes going down in this city, believe it or not. But I think the emotions and the investment that we make in the department and in guys like you and the fellows that were against the wall is justified, and it's worth it. And thank you very much for that.
Amen.
Well, thank you, Councilman Davis and Mayor Benjamin and Council. I would just like to say just very briefly, we all know that you can't lead people unless you love people, and that's the way we lead. But also, the Columbia Police Department is a spoke-on-the-wheel of the city team that keeps the city rolling, and while I appreciate the successes that we enjoy, but we couldn't do it without every department that's among those spokes-on-the-wheel. So we will continue to do that. We'll continue to lead our officers and our citizens with love and compassion as we move forward. And I'm so thankful for the Council and City Manager's leadership on so many issues that we deal with day to day to keep moving forward. I'm glad to be a member of this team and a family member, because that's how I feel. Thank you so much.
Melron. Melron?
Melron, wait, wait, wait.
You better give them while you can. Mr. Duval.
Melron, I just wanted to tell you that one of the things that I have in my box of memorabilia is a thank you letter from a young fellow named Robert Stewart, who at the time was Chief of Police of the town of Charol, and he was thanking me for allowing him to attend the FBI Academy where he graduated with honors, left Charol soon after returning, and went on to be Chief of SLED. So I hope that you don't get the wanderlust and leave us. We've got you trained now. We want to use your talent here.
I'll be right here. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Melron. Preacher, you good? Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, we have one final proclamation, the National Mentoring Month proclamation. The Honorable Stephen K. Benjamin.
Absolutely. We'll do this, and I do want these young people to know, we are acutely aware of the fact you guys have homework to do and projects to work on, so you don't have to stay here with us all night, okay? We won't take your absence as meaning anything other than you have other priorities. It is a pleasure to have Chairman Plank here and also Chairwoman Harris from Richland School District One, who planned to be here and couldn't make it, to announce our proclamation in support of National Mentoring Month. We know that more often than not, in order to be a leader, you have to see a leader. You have to have men and women who care about you, helping to develop you into the young leaders that we know we can create all throughout this community. So cities, counties, and states all across this country are acknowledging January as National Mentoring Month. We're announcing, of course, also the new Mayor's Mentoring Summit that's going to partner with Richland School District One and Two to be held in April, and we'll seek participation of all of our community leaders, including the members of this council. We're going to have some fun and games, and also, of course, some very serious discussions as we try to ensure the best Columbia and Richland County we can have for our children, and we're going to have, of course, organizations there, work together, the plus of the organizations that are dedicating their time and energy to making sure our kids do the great things we have in store for them. Some key statistics, of course, with a mentor, that even at-risk youth are 52% more likely than their peers to not skip a day of school, or 55% more likely to get enrolled in college, or 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs. The vast majority of kids in our community grow up without a mentor in their lives, and across the country, in the aggregate, that means nine million young people are looking for someone to make their lives that much better. So keep ears open, eyes open for the details, full details of our mentoring summit, and we'll have an online registration portal on our city website for folks to participate. I'd like to ask Chairman Plank if you have any words, and if not, want to present you with a proclamation, but please.
Well, I'll just mention a few. I, one, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate being here and being part of this partnership, this collaborative effort. You know, and I'll tell you, for Richland, too, we do take mentoring seriously, from our students as well as our teachers, administrators, and out into the community, and from our bowtie programs for our boys, our pearls programs for our girls, the faith-based organizations that partner with our district, as well as other organizations who are interested in making a difference in our students' lives. And then it goes beyond that. When we look at teachers and administrators, and we've spent a lot of time coming alongside, mentoring our first-year teachers, and not dropping at that point, but going into a second year so that we can make sure their success. We know that teacher success depends on those first several years, and with our growing teacher shortage, this is important to have good, solid, qualified teachers in our classrooms to help and ensure the success of our kids. And then we go a step further into our community with our recent special education partnership group in which parents from those who've been in the program for a while with special needs, children are coming alongside first-time parents in those programs so that they can have that support. So that's really critical. And I'd like to also take a moment to thank Mr. Manning for his work on the anti-human trafficking that is in our schools as we speak. He had mentioned some statistics, but that is critical piece, so I appreciate the proclamation there as well. So thank you.
Amen. Thank you so much, and thank Mr. Trezeman, Donald Trezeman, for being here from Congressman Carver's office as well. Thank you for joining us. All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have a public hearing this evening. I do believe there needs to be some opening comments, but I will read into the record that this would be the public hearing for the improvement plan for the Vista Improvement District.
We've still got a few minutes before we can officially start, don't we? Or can we start? We noticed at six? Okay. Oh, fantastic. Okay.
You can go ahead with this one, Mr. Mayor, and we have Ms. Meredith Atkinson, Executive Director of the Vista Guild, here to join you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and thank you, Mayor Benjamin and councilmembers, for having us again tonight. I am Meredith Atkinson with the Vista Guild, and just as a quick recap, this is number two of two public hearings that we wanted to put on the agenda to give as many property owners, as many Vista stakeholders, as many people who wanted to speak on behalf of this opportunity for the Vista, especially since the December 19th public hearing was so close to the holidays, we just decided we would do two. I can say that I have really enjoyed the passion and the enthusiasm in the last few weeks coming from property owners and other stakeholders in the Vista, just because it's very obvious that we all have the same thing in common, and that is we really want to continue to make the Vista the thriving, hustling, and bustling entertainment and cultural district that it is. And I want to thank Ms. Wilson and councilmembers and Mayor. You have all been so supportive and really given your time and energy and talent over the last few months to have these conversations with our property owners, with my board members, and with myself, and we are here just to make sure that we can continue to do what we need to do in the Vista, not only marketing and events, but of course, our very vital and important Clean and Safe Program. So I'm going to be here, of course, to answer any questions that may come up specifically that I can answer, but I want to make sure everybody who is here has the time to speak and give their opinion.
I think we've had a good opportunity to actually have a very productive dialogue all amongst ourselves, and as a result, we don't have anyone sign up to speak, and I want to keep it that way if we can. We do want to acknowledge a few things. We had a really, I think, productive meeting this past week. I want to thank all the leaders in the Vista with various respective interests in the Vista Guild for pulling us all together at the Blue Marlin, no less. So it's always good, brother dukes, to be fed well when we eat, when we meet. But I felt very good leaving that meeting with a strong consensus. Of course, I was there. Mr. McDowell is the district rep, the city manager, and of course, the Chief of Police as well, coalescing around the real issues before us, not letting the tail wag the dog. We want to make sure that we have a safe and clean environment in the Vista, and our goal is just to make sure we identify the funding sources to make that happen, recognizing that the places, that the place where the central business district downtown in Main Street was over a decade ago is very different than what the Vista is now, and making sure that if a business improvement district is ever established, and I think we are at a clear point of unreadiness right now to do that. There has to be a collaborative approach that has everyone at the table making it happen and not in spite of others' opinions. I made it clear at that meeting and I think in dialogue with many of you that I'm not in support of moving forward in that regard. I am, however, in support in working together with the men and women at this table to finding the funding to make sure that we continue to see the Vista grow and prosper and have the resources there, continue to... Honestly, I believe that even in a few years, that the Vista that we know now will be a wonderful quaint memory. I believe that the best days are ahead of us, so I want to commit to you on behalf of myself and our colleagues that will work to meet the modified funding requests. But I do not think there's the readiness here to approve a business improvement district here, and I want to recognize the district rep and then Mr. Duval, if that's all right. Mr. McDowell?
I think our meeting was very, very productive. We had an opportunity to share. We had an opportunity to dialogue, and right now, I think it gives us an opportunity for further dialogue. It gives us an opportunity to look at this in a very, not a forensic eye, but to look at it in an eye that at least it becomes discerning within the Vista. So I think it was productive. I think there's still some work to do. I see there's some conversations still to be had, and I think with that, I think we've got an opportunity to push forward.
Mr. Mayor, I unfortunately was unable to attend that meeting last Wednesday, and I would ask that the council not vote to stop the process of the bid, because the law gives us 120 days between the public hearing and the first reading of an ordinance, and I would like to keep the pressure on the council to fine $115,000 more dollars for the Vista if the will of the council is not to have a bid and the will of the... If the will of the council is not to have a bid, and the will of the property owners is not to have a bid, then we have a commitment to the Vista and the vital area that that is for our city to come up with that other money. In that 120 days, we will have some time to decide whether we can meet that commitment. So, I would like to just have the public hearing tonight and keep the pressure on until we can find a secure funding.
I appreciate that, Mr. Duval. However, I express my commitment, and I think there's a collective commitment here to get it done, so I don't think the pressure's on council. I think we're putting undue pressure on the property owners and others in the Vista by having them coming back and forth in almost yo-yo fashion, "Let's commit that we're going to get it done, and it's up to us to get it done," without the specter of this de facto tax increase hanging over the heads of property owners. So, I was there, as I mentioned in our meeting last week, at the beginning of the first bid. I was a member of the Board of the Columbia Downtown Business Association on the Jim Levinson's leadership, and we came and worked with the city on establishing the Business Improvement District. Gosh, maybe 12, 13 years ago, I'm not sure how long ago, Libby might know better than the rest of us. And it worked, we know bids work, but they work when they come, when they're born and birthed with the support and active support of property owners. And if you don't have that, then you're starting on the wrong foot. We're not there, and if, in fact, we get there at some point in the future, that's all right, but we need to commit that we will resolve this issue. And I think we do that without, again, forcing, and I believe we do it in a way that goes beyond what the original request was, the request was for another $115,000 over three years. I think, let's try and address this, not, we can't do it in perpetuity, but let's have a long-term solution that we have to be committed to. So, I'd rather do that than having to have property owners who are here or afar having to come back and forth, wondering if something's going to happen at city council. We need to resolve to deal with this issue this budget season and make it happen. America, I want to thank you and your board for your leadership, not just, not on the bid issue, but just in seeking to resolve this issue with some finality. And oftentimes, we take a circuitous path to get to exactly where we need to get to, and you guys have led us here, so we'll get it done. But, Mr. Rickaman, did you have your hand? Okay. Ms. Devine, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine and Mr. McDowell.
I just wanted to say, my commitment is there to allocate the funding. I've always been very supportive of the yellow shirts and want to see it happen without you having to guess where the money is going to come from and whether or not the service will stop. So, my commitment is there. I do want to, I guess, reiterate the point that I made at the first public hearing is that I agree with the mayor. I think that bids work, and they work well when everyone can come around what it's for, what we can do, and how it's going to operate. And I don't think we are there and probably weren't going to get there because of the way we got here. So, stopping and backing up for a minute, I think, is good. However, I want to encourage you guys not to completely forego the idea of looking at it in the future. I mean, I just think that the way, and I know it was the immediate need for the yellow shirts, but the way this bid came forward was very short-sighted in that it was only about the yellow shirts. But, you know, we've all seen how great the city center partnership has worked. The bid is a lot bigger than the yellow shirts. I think that's the public part that everyone sees, but, you know, when you look at, you know, what Main Street is doing, they're planning for the future, they're strategic about how they go after businesses and other things, I think it would address some of the other things that y'all have tried to do in the past as well. So, I would just urge you not to completely abandon that idea, but maybe, you know, you've got a great group together that's talking, I would just encourage you to continue to talk and look at, you know, what may happen in the future, and see whether or not it is something that y'all want to pursue in the future.
Fantastic. Mr. McDowell?
I did not, we met, I did not perceive it to be stopping this thing. What I thought in a very processed way was to continue the kind of dialogue we had there last week. And I think that in itself lends itself not to stopping, but to enhancing the program. Because the only way we're going to do anything is that we've got to be, we've got to be wide open in our understanding of what's taking place, we've got to be transparent enough to talk through those things. And I think if we did that, it's not, for me, a stop, but it's a continuation. And I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
The, I just also want to put on the record that we also have a pending request from the City Center Partnership that we want to address as well, Madam City Manager. So, I feel Carol Gibbons giving me the "I" from the back of the room, so I wanted to make sure I put that on the record. But we'll get it done, and we'll get it done this budget cycle, so stay tuned, all right? Stay tuned, and how do you want to handle this, Mr. McDowell? Proceedually, parliamentarily, how do you feel comfortable?
Well, what we've essentially done was not to defer it, we're just waiting. So, there's not, in my estimation, there's nothing parliamentarily we can do. We're just waiting now.
Right, all right. So, the next time this appears, next time this appears on the agenda, if in any way it should be for the appropriation of funds, that's it, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith, thank you. Mr. Mayor, you're at seven minutes after seven. We can proceed with opening our zoning, planning, public hearing, first reading items. Ms. Hampton will come forward.
Sure, I saw Senator Scott a second ago, he moved like a phantom, I'm not sure if he left the room or not, but I'll recognize him when he comes back in the room. And all of our wonderful friends from the Vista, we will not be offended if you leave the room right now. I'm sure you all have someplace better you want to be. Thank you. So, Krista's coming up?
Mr. Mayor, as our Vista folks are leaving as well, I'd say, Mr. Dukes and others, I hope y'all are having a great restaurant week. I have enjoyed Restaurant Week, attending the Vista and other places.
Y'all come over to the City Club, y'all, I'm calling on behalf of the city manager, Teresa Loosa, we need to pay about 4:30.
I know. You've been doing good.
I know.
I don't know who that is.
I'll go fast, if y'all go fast.
That's the man.
Ms. Wilson, are we ready?
Yep.
We're just sitting here chatting.
We were too.
Yeah, I think Mayor Benjamin's back there with the people, but, yes, ma'am.
We can go ahead, we've got some folks here, so.
All right. This evening, we begin with annexation comprehensive map amendment and a zoning map amendment. This is at 405 Green Lawn Drive. A request to annex, assign land use classification of industrial, and assign a zoning of light industrial M1. All right, is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move the question, if the clerk will read the roll. Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Also, a request for annexation comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment at the next to 1080 Shop Road. A request to annex, assign land use classification of employment campus, and assign a zoning of light industrial, that is M1, upon annexation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item? Seeing none, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Carl Row.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Numbers 24 and 25 are the same property, recently annexed land, and it is to assign, they confirm the future land use classification, and to confirm the zoning. You are confirming the land use classification of Urban Core Community Activity Center, and you are confirming the zoning of C3.
All right. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this, these items?
Move a rule of 24 and 25.
Is there a second? All right, any discussion?
Yeah.
Move the previous question, Carl Row.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
We are now moving into map amendments. This is a map amendment request at 2300 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request to rezone the parcel from General Residential, RG1 and RG2, to Neighborhood Commercial District C2.
I know there are folks here to speak in favor of this, is there anyone speaking against it? I'm always in the mood for a great sermon, but unless you really want to talk to us, we can just have a motion.
So, move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Carl Row.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you, Pastor, you and your partners, we're excited about this project, and look forward to seeing it through the fruition, all right?
Mr. Mayor, may I say just a word?
Absolutely.
Let me just say a word to the Second Nazareth Church family, those persons who are here with Pastor Noble tonight, the developers here, we've had an opportunity to look at what you're thinking about doing there in Edgewood. It looks good, it is going to enhance our community, it's going to enhance our city, and particularly, it's going to give persons looking for housing, affordable housing. Thank y'all so much for your vision and what you do for our city. Thank you very much. Oh, we need now some money, right?
All right, we did vote, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure we vote it. And Pastor, again, you and Jean, if y'all leave, we will not be offended, okay? All right, amen. All right, thank you now.
Your next case, another map amendment at 3329 River Drive. This is a request to rezone the parcel from Single Family Residential and Design Preservation to Office and Institutional Design Preservation in the Earlwood community.
Absolutely. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Senator Scott?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. I appeared with the Moody's some months back as we reached to this piece of property. The Moody's have owned this property for over 33 years, it's a hair shop right on that corner. They also own an adjacent lot right next to it, and used to own the house behind it. They've been an asset to that community, came in, did a lot of renovation, head of style has been there for a long time. They went before the zoning board to ask for zoning changes, they were denied. So, we're now appealing back to council and asking them to do the right thing by this family, who has made a tremendous investment inside the city for over 33 years as a hair shop, never had a problem. As a matter of fact, some of the individuals who attend that shop are well-known people and well-respected people here in the Columbia area.
Thank you, Senator. Was that, Mr. Rickaman?
I'm just curious, I'd like to hear from staff why the denial, looking at the parcel having been by there, and looking at its use for so long, I'm a little confused.
The use is a special exception, or it is a non-conforming use, but the zoning on that side of the street is predominantly residential. So, it's long been a policy, and we've followed that policy with this guidance, to not encourage commercial encroachment into residential, so that is where that policy guidance came from.
I understand not encouraging, but at the same time, we've had something that's been commercial, and if I ride down River Drive, I can go by the printers, and I can go by Amira, and I can go by all these other places that are commercial in that strength. And I think this would be a great place to use some administrative judgment and come up with a solution for these folks, because I, for one, have a hard time denying it, based on its past use and its current location.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Rickaman on this. We've done it all over the city when we want to. And if the past history is commercial, then why would we not want to go back?
It's a non-conforming commercial use, certainly, and it's council's prerogative to go ahead and change that.
Ms. Devine, and then Mr. McDowell.
And I'll have a question for Krista, but I know the Moody's have attempted this before, and I know they've called, and I've hoped that they could work out something where the neighborhood could support it. The neighborhood has not supported this, because although what we're looking at is the entire parcel, the salon is on the corner, and then there's a lot, well, it appears, if you're driving, is a vacant lot. It's all one parcel, but it's a vacant lot, and then next to that is a residential house, which then starts the residential. And many years ago, and Sam, you recall this, when actually Representative Hart came forward for his house on the other side of river, and we denied that to be commercial because the neighborhood had different boundaries on the river that started the residential, and we wanted no further commercial encroachment. So, I think the concern from the neighborhood was where it appears to be a vacant lot right now, and if there's something else that happens on that corner, then you've got more commercial encroachment into the residential portion. So, just for everybody's edification, I offer that as clarification as to probably why there was denial, at least on the planning commission, and I don't know why there is no neighborhood people here tonight for this. With that said, the Moody's have been great neighbors the entire time they've been there, and so I know that they, you know, want to sell to someone who will continue to be a good neighbor, and they want to do, follow the rules, and get it into some kind of conformity. My question to you, Krista, is, is there not something, because of the size of the lot, I don't know if that's, if there's any opportunity to do any buffers or barriers or something, if there is a, you know, because the commercial piece has been commercial, yes, for many years, and I don't think anyone has a concern with that. I think the neighborhood's biggest concern is the further encroachment of commercial onto residential. So, would there be any compromise that could be put in place to allow for some buffers that may give the neighborhood some consolation, but then allow the Moody's to move forward with any plans with this property?
As it stands, buffers wouldn't be required. If they wanted to install them, they certainly could. Redevelopment of the property as commercial, depending on the intensity of the use... Redevelopment of the property as commercial, depending on the intensity of the use, would require at least partial compliance with the landscape ordinance, which would include buffers to adjacent residential property. The extent of those, again, would be determined based on the investment of the commercial property. But they certainly, we could work with them if they wanted to install a buffer.
Mr. Davis? I'm sorry, Ms. McDowell, please. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I hope Krista can do that. Let me just share with this council my frustration. The planning commission tends to do what they want to do, and they want to protect certain areas in this city. I can go and point out parcels where they have allowed, you know, a continuation, what do you call them, junkyard, where they store cars in a neighborhood, where they have allowed other commercial entities in a neighborhood. But this is typical of the planning commission compared to other areas that I've seen in this city. And I, you know, I've really lost respect for the planning commission. That's for the record.
Well, Sam, the planning commission, I'm pretty sure, because I saw it on the Facebook page, the neighborhood expressed their opposition. So I don't think you need to be blaming the planning commission.
I did not say the neighborhood, I'm saying the people up there.
You're saying the planning commission, the planning commission.
Make a decision based on some logical arguments that they've made in the past. They are not consistent.
Well, and I'll say this, while I may disagree with the planning commission on this item, staff recommendation was denial. Neighborhood opposition was there, I'm not sure we can hang this around the necks of the planning commission, as a former planning commissioner, who's had to sit here and make some tough decisions as well. But that is for the record, Mr. Davis. Strike it for the record. Is there any further discussion, or if not, is there a motion?
I move to approve.
All right. Is there a second? Any discussion with the previous question, call the roll.
Mr. Rickerman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
All right.
Map amendment at 2717 Canterbury Road. This is a request to rezone the parcel from single-family residential RS1 to single-family residential RS2.
All right. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'm sorry, you're back there, I'm sorry. You were blocked by me not looking up, actually. So, please.
Hey, I'm Paul Goff, and I'm for it. If you look at all the other parcels around it, most, all the other ones fall in line with an RS2. And it's always been an RS2 up until, I guess, around 10 years ago or so. And across the street, they're all zoned as an RS2 as well. And we would just like to get it back to where it was originally. I have the plat here where it shows what it was originally divided into two lots as an RS2.
Can Krista speak to rationale behind these recommendations?
And I'm sorry, want to make sure everyone who's speaking in favor of has spoken. Is anyone here to speak against this? Okay.
My name is Emma Bryson. My lot is adjacent to the one-third of the back of Mr. Goff's lot. I would like to speak against this rezoning. At the previous meeting, there was no one from the neighborhood at that meeting that was in favor of this. The Neighborhood Association has sent in a letter opposing this. Really, there is no reason to do this that has been cited by Mr. Goff, other than it makes the property more valuable to him. He is a non-resident. He owns the property, he does not live in the neighborhood, and everybody in the neighborhood that has spoken publicly or has written a letter publicly is against it.
Yes, ma'am.
And we would ask that he not be allowed to enrich his own interest in property at the detriment of everybody in the neighborhood. And to use Mr. Mayor's analogy, I think to do so would be the tail wagging the dog, the dog being the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate your comments, but I want to make sure we all focus on the clear policy issues here. Surrounding this parcel, is it RS1 or RS2?
Across the street is RS2. It is surrounded on that side of the street by RS1.
Oh, RS1? Okay. The difference is, under code RS1, RS2, RS2 allow multifamily?
No, they do not. However, the size at which the lot has to be is smaller for the RS2 than the RS1.
So it's still single-family residential?
Correct.
It's subdivided.
So the, I understand the concern here. So we're still talking about single-family residential. Help me and the rest of the council understand what this means in terms of development lot size. What's the difference here?
For RS1, it requires a 15,000 square foot lot. For RS2, it's an 8,500 square foot lot. So for RS2, you would, it's just about half its last. Setbacks are 35 feet front for the RS1 and 25 feet front for the RS2.
So he could, if he got the zoning, he could subdivide the lot and then build two single-family houses?
It's a potential, I can't confirm without a plat, but it would certainly be more of a potential with RS2 than RS1.
So it may not be big enough for RS2, is what you're saying?
Without a plat, I can't say for sure.
So the 15,000 on one side and the 8,500 on the other side, is that, is the setback included in that?
What it is, is to create a lot. In the existing zoning, you need 15,000 square foot of lot area. If it were to be rezoned to RS2, in order to create a lot, you would need only 8,500 square feet. So you could have smaller lots.
What other administrative processes would the owners have to go through to subdivide the lot?
It's a staff review. If it meets the standards, we review it at staff level.
Is that rather perfunctory? Just to the naked eye, that lot subdivided would look like the rest of the lots, I don't know if it's north, south, east or west, with about the same size. Is that the history of the property?
I think Mr. Goff indicates he has a plat.
And this is a unique neighborhood, I know that, that what you see now may not have been the case. This parcel is a fantastic neighborhood, just, I'm sorry, you were answering my question.
I think Mr. Goff indicated he has a plat where there was, it was originally platted as two lots. It has been RS1, I think he may have been mistaken with what it was as far as RS2. It's been RS1 for many years. But originally, he has a plat showing that there were two lots there.
All right. Mr. Duval?
You ready for a motion?
I want to make sure we've gotten all questions answered first, and certainly, did you want to say something, Ms. Racks, or the applicant, did you want to add anything else to this discussion?
I just wanted to say that what you would call the inner loop of this is historically, back to 1970, we've researched that far back, has all been RS1. It's only on the other side of the street that it's RS2. So we respectfully, the Neighborhood Association respectfully requests that the inner loop of it remain consistent with the other properties that are adjacent to it, rather than subdividing this single lot.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Goff, please.
If I could state that if it were divided, it would just fall in line with all the other lots that surround it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other thoughts about the planning commission, Mr. Davis?
I have none.
Mr. Mayor, I've gotten contacts from many of the neighborhood opposed to this, and I'd like to move we deny the rezoning.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, call the roll.
Mr. Rickerman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
So Mr. Davis just agree with the planning commission? Is that what? Aye. Not to mess with you, you know that. Thank y'all. Aye. One more.
Go ahead. Final case on your public hearing tonight is a map amendment and a major PUD amendment, and this is a little convoluted. We've got 1507, 1520, 1511 UG Street. This is a request to rezone the parcels from office and institutional design development district and planned unit development district, commercial DD, to general commercial district, DD. Here you can see, they are separate parcels, which is why you've got the two separate recommendations from staff and planning commission concerning the rezoning. The recommendation for the hatched parcel on UG Street is to approve. The recommendation on the other parcel is not to approve.
All right. Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item? Yes, sir. Please. From the microphone, please. How are you?
This is sort of an old legacy parcel that came from, that's tied into the PUD for the canal side. My name's Jillian Wilson, I'm speaking on behalf of the McEwen family and Rosen family. And so you have the U-shaped property that's wrapping around the McEwen property. McEwen property is presently zoned C1, office use effectively. C3 is what we're trying to get it zoned to, which will allow retail and hotel use, which is congruent with what's going on in that area. Canal Side PUD really doesn't have much to do with this. We're not really a part of Canal Side, it's off the side of it. But the McEwen property and the horseshoe-shaped property are being, with an attempt to rezone to C3, would be congruent to the highest and best use of the property. It's tight there when it comes to parking, and that very narrow lot that you're seeing across from it is a Landsman tract. It would be, while Science Alley is an old legacy trash driveway, where you put your trash in the back, when this was residential 20 years ago, there were smaller houses on it. Science Alley is actually a driveway now. We would, we're working, put those together to meet parking requirements for these two other parcels in the future, for the purpose of better marketing and having more functional use of the real estate.
Is anyone here to speak against this? Ms. McDowell, you have a motion? Is there a second?
Are you moving both of them at the same time?
Yes, sir.
The denial of one and the acceptance of the other?
You denying the one or you approving both? One parcel's...
One parcel, the front parcel.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. We would like them both approved for functionality's sake.
What's your motion, sir?
I so move the parcel be approved in total.
Both of them?
Both, yes.
All right. Is this a second, and then we'll have some discussion? Is there a second?
Sam's second.
Oh, sorry.
No, I didn't second it.
All right.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Rickerman, discussion, Mr. Duval.
I'd like Krista to use this, on this map, which one is the one that...
Let's see if I can. It's the slender one that fronts William Street that we did, that was not recommended. Correct. Thank you, Justin.
And what is it now?
It is C1, which will allow for parking currently on C1. So the reason being, one, the C3 being kind of orphaned there, also, just the idea of that parking being off-site in that location, from a pedestrian safety point of view, is not really desirable. Although you can put parking there now in a C1.
I don't understand what you mean by safety. I'm confused if you're on an island lot.
So you're going to walk up William Street and then up Hampton Street to access the development?
I don't know. It looks like to me you can walk right across the lot.
Well, you could trespass.
I thought we were encouraging people to walk. Did I miss that? Were you changing tones on them?
Not at all, sir. Not to trespass on property.
I mean, you can walk right there.
Krista, what's planned for this?
As you know, we, the plans are not necessarily germane, because they can change them, and that may very well be the case, but our understanding was it was going to be a fast beverage-type place with a drive-through.
Fast beverage.
What does that mean?
What does fast beverage mean?
Hot drinks with a drive-through.
Oh, oh, that would be really good.
Again, I don't know that that's for sure, and we don't like to make decisions based on potential uses, because they can change, but...
All right, Mr. Davis?
I guess this is probably to, maybe staff as well, but... Do y'all know the history of Science Alley? Again, you know, something comes up there. Is there a marker or anything going in there to commemorate Science Alley, what it was, that area, that neighborhood?
No, sir, not at this time. I'm sure...
Does anybody know anything about Science Alley?
I know your wife could probably educate us significantly.
A lot of people in this city would tell you. Anyway.
That's probably, but that's probably a conversation you need to have with Jillian and some others to make sure we try and recognize that in some way. All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
What was the motion?
Move the previous question.
To approve.
To approve. Mr. McDowell's motion to approve.
Approve both of them.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rickerman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
No.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Pending, Jillian, you and Sam, talking to Sam Davis about a historical marker to reference Science Alley. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. All right now. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir?
Mr. Mayor, if you would...
Thank y'all. Escape while you can.
Mr. Mayor and council, if you would allow Krista to share another tidbit of information that we are privy to say this evening because of an approval at one of your respective governing bodies, and I'll let her share the news.
Well, it's with great sadness for myself, and I mean that sincerely, but very happy for Brian Cook, who is leaving us.
No!
What?
Brian's my man, now you can't let him...
I know, but he is going to be the town administrator for Blackwood.
Oh, congratulations. City administrator for Blackwood, not the county.
Blackville? Blackville?
Please bar the door. Do not allow Mr. Cook to leave the premises. That is...
That is entirely unacceptable. Brian is a, I believe, a unique talent, and you've been an incredible blessing to us, and I guess the only real upside is we're keeping you in the region, and I hopefully will still have your cell phone number, because I will still be bugging you.
I'll have it.
Okay, congratulations, friend. Well deserved, well deserved. All right. Have we gotten all about Blackwood, Winsborough, water issues worked out yet? Have those all resolved?
I think Missy said we're gonna go annex.
Put them on the clock right now. Put them on the clock.
We're so excited for Brian, and I think, again, it's a wonderful testament to our staff and their growth and development, and Krista, you're tutelous as well, so, don't you go anywhere now. I can't look, every day I'm dealing with too many, but I'm all bittersweet, because I'm so happy for all of them.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. You guys are killing me in 2018, man. Libby, David, Brian, what's up with this? All right, absolutely, man. No, thank you. I will still be bugging you, you know I need you, so I'll be, I'll be cleaning. Keep, keep your books with you, okay?
Mayor, can we get an update on the weather and what your schedule is for tomorrow from the city manager?
On the what? Oh, I think, I'm not sure we have, when will we have that word, Madam City Manager?
Well, as soon as we finish the meeting, I was gonna get back on the phone with Harry. The way we left it on our call earlier is we definitely have a two-hour delay, but I didn't want to do that to then have to pull it back in the morning. It's looking like there are several closures all day, so we'll make that decision this evening. Look, we're usually the first to make the calls, so I'm seeing what everybody else is doing school-wise, but there's a lot of closures at this point, all day.
And Krista's meeting at 11:30 at Lurie Center is still pending?
I think we need to cancel all city government meetings tomorrow, if we haven't already.
All day, or between now and noon, or what are you thinking? Just all, all day? Okay. Oh, we have committee meeting? You have committee meeting, so?
No, we have a planning commission, a planning meeting.
Yeah, one of the information sessions.
Okay, got you, got you.
As well as a water open house.
We do still have a couple of citizens who want to speak, so I want to make sure we, so as soon as you have the official word, share it, so we can, we can, we can share it broadly. Any committee reports or referrals? Mr. Davis?
Go ahead.
Mr. McDowell, please.
It is mid-November 26, 19, 2017. There are two, actually, two concerns. One concern, of course, the committee asked to consider limiting the number of races that occur annually within the neighborhood, and requiring organizers to notify neighborhoods of the scheduled races. The chief, of course, has, he consensually agrees also that the Columbia Police Department continues to adhere to its current communication process for races, and Chief Holbrook, of course, agreed to define the communication plan in writing to decide where the signs will go while the race is taking place. I have two of these tonight. The other has to do with, the committee also reviewed the terms of appointments and term limits on the City of Columbia boards and agencies. There was consensus of the committee that requested, that requires five votes of council in order to appoint an individual to city boards and commissions for more than two years, consecutive years. They requested a list of individuals who are currently serving more than two years, two terms.
Two terms. Terms.
Yeah, two terms. I bring this report to you, for, I would thank approval and the submission of record.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. And just for clarity's sake, that was for people to go beyond traditional two terms requires a five, a vote of five members of council.
That's correct.
To reappoint them.
Except for no problem.
Yeah, absolutely. Move the previous question, Court Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. All right, any other committee reports?
One.
All right.
There's a, there was a follow-up meeting by the Economic and Community Development Committee, specifically to, we were asked to review the sidewalk vending ordinance and to update it to modern classification of carts. There was a meeting here, and the city manager and staff sat in with us and gave their input. The consensus would be as follows, and I'll ask Ms. Devine to add where she needs to. One, we were, we are asked to, it was recommended that we advise city council that national chains cannot be prohibited from submitting a sidewalk vendor app, an application.
That was legal, or, okay.
That was legal. Legal was also a part of the discussion.
What was that again?
That we cannot prohibit national chains from having sidewalk vending. Legally, that would be a violation.
If you recall, the-
Is that some type of equal protection discussion?
Or I set the time.
I'd be curious to hear.
Any area of a-
Let's get a second opinion.
More about that.
Second opinion.
Yeah, I want to, it's, it's, I think, I mean, and I know Daniel just wanted you to hear it, when, to hear it said twice.
I didn't hear what you said the first time.
Oh, I see, see. But the, that, that does, if in fact, it means we're going to be potentially receiving more applications from national or multinational corporations to do food carts on, on, on Main Street, then we may in fact have to revisit the ordinance altogether. Because I, I can tell you right now, I won't support that. And I think it's inconsistent with what we want to see through the passing of the ordinance, and if we're going to go in that direction, I just think, I just think it's the wrong direction, so.
Point of order.
I do want to, I do want to, I do want to hear some more of this legal discussion, since I wasn't at the committee meeting. Yes, sir, Mr. Duval.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I ask that this matter be put on the next agenda, and so we can have a printout of the proposal? I haven't seen the proposal, and I'd like to read it.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, I was going to recommend that you receive this as a verbal update, and that at some, at the appropriate time, we would put this in narrative form for, for discussion amongst council members and staff, to include legal. Is that acceptable? Okay. The next point was that we, we do not amend the definition of a cart or allow accessories that fit within the designated footprint. By that, I think we meant that, you know, an area, defined area is an area, and you don't do anything to provide any type of obstruction to foot traffic. Second, or third, is that we add language that sets a designated footprint for sidewalk, as I just mentioned, for sidewalk vending carts and for safety of pedestrians, and at no time can the designated footprint obstruct pedestrian traffic.
Let me add something, Sam. Was that pursuant to the conversation we had with the gentleman who wanted, all right, that's-
I, I think it, it sort of originated around the discussion in that area, right? For, that staff will allow sample photos, will add sample photos of well-constructed sidewalk vending carts to the ordinance. So, I think, probably similar to what we saw today with the proposed ordinance, is we would have maybe some examples of carts and what could be permitted as attachments and justification to, justification, location to pedestrians as they use the sidewalk. And amend the list to permit, to, of, the list of permitted merchandise to reflect all merchandise included in the city's ordinance, along with salads and pizza, you know, food items and sanitary issues was part of the discussions. Then, essentially, just amend the ordinance as outlined. So, these points, Tamika, anything you want to add?
No, no, I would just add the, one of the discussions was, our current ordinance hasn't been as strict on, there are some carts that will, or some vendors who will put additional tables out, or, we also talked about, they might have coolers to provide drinks or other things, and they might block the sidewalk. So, that was really the rationale behind that.
So, the, one, we're submitting this as information, and ask that, I guess, Madam Clerk, we put this in, in the appropriate form for, for discussion?
Yes, sir.
By full council and appropriate staff. Yes, ma'am. Come to legal, legal.
No, no, no.
Okay, that's it.
No desire, no desire to weigh privilege, we want to talk about this on the next. Let's talk about this on the next executive session agenda. Yeah, all right. Y'all okay with that? All right, sir. Thank you. Any other items to report or referral? If no, we do have at least a couple of citizens who signed up to speak. John Holmes, Ms. Sarah Neiman. Okay, John?
Mayor Benjamin and City Council, how's everybody doing today?
Hey, John.
Okay, as you know, I represent an organization called Homeless Upper Homos of Columbia. I'm here with one of our members of, you had to leave already. On our weekly meetings, one of the topics that always comes up is the definition of inclement weather, okay? Now, according to the dictionary's definition, inclement roughly means too hot, too cold, too rainy, too snowy, too windy, okay? The situation being, I know, at least about four years ago, they used to run the winter shelter from about November until right around March. And I think three years ago, they changed it from the winter shelter to inclement weather, but given it the definition to go ahead and open it at 40 degrees and below. Now, there are some unseen problems that the average person and city council don't see, that the homeless live every day because of this definition in inclement weather. One of the things is, we do have transitions, okay? And transitions, it being a day center for most of the homeless on the street, allows you to come inside until 5 o'clock. But they only have so much storage space when you first enter for the ones that are on the street. After those storage bins are filled, they cannot take anybody else's bag, and they will not let you, they will not allow you to take the bag back inside transitions. That's a no-no. So, that forces the homeless person back out into the street when it's too rainy. Now, this just happened, just recently, on the 23rd. The library was closed because of the holidays. It was raining consistently, not hard, but consistently, for about a day and a half. It was 41 degrees or 42 degrees. The winter shelters were, sorry, the inclement weather shelter, because of 40 and, 40 degrees and below, was not open. That in turn caused the homeless that weren't housed in transitions or somewhere else to go ahead and get saturated with all their belongings, okay? So, the question is, what definition is the city and the city officials using to define inclement weather versus the dictionary's definition, and what can be done to possibly rectify that problem? And if it can be rectified, can they possibly consider raising the degrees from 40 degrees to at least about 45? That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you. Is there something else? We've been talking about a number of different issues, and had some good meetings over the last couple of weeks, and I had this conversation with, with John a week or two ago as well. We actually had a pretty, I think, vigorous discussion, debate around if it was 42, or 43, or 44, or 40, or what have you. I spent some time with the mayor of New York City and some NYPD officers. In New York, it's 32 degrees, but we're talking about cold, not about rain, and so, but I think it, obviously, it's something that should go into our overall discussion, particularly with the United Way and other folks who are helping us coordinate our overall response. So, if it's, if it's John working closely with, with Missy, Goffin, and others as we integrate this into our full discussion, it's worth a look, especially looking at the increased number of wet weather events and just really weird weather events that every community is dealing with. We will have, as I'm sure we all expect, this summer, we'll have some days that'll be extremely hot, maybe hotter than usual and hotter than ever. So, it probably does require us to go back and revisit the parameters. Recognize we still have to have objective parameters by which to guide us, but maybe expanding them a little bit, recognizing the challenges on the street, especially those people who may not be a square peg in the round holes that are designed around some of our partners. So, thank you, John. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. McDowell.
John, let me just say a real thanks to you. You've been, you're very passionate about what all of us ought to be passionate about, and that is taking care of those brothers and sisters who are out there and who's cold tonight. I think you're absolutely right. There needs to be a lowering, or upping, or whatever it is of that temperature. And I think if we could just be a committee of one, and we make this something real for our city, and those brothers and sisters who are hovering under some bridge are hovering together in some corner, just trying to stay warm, that we make it a real reality for our city. So, I am very appreciative of you coming forth. This is your second time. You were here with us last time, which means that, that passion continues to rise. So, I thank you for that, and hopefully, hopefully something can happen. Sometimes I think I got inside information, but I don't, because it's still cold. So, please, just know that, just know that as a council and as my colleagues, we stand, we stand with you and understand your passion.
Amen, amen. All right. Any other citizens sent up to speak or wish to be heard? If not, we will entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Any second, is there a second? One of you all counts as a second. Move the previous question, Court Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you all so much.